I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will everyone please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Lit.
Here.
Vice Mayor Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Woods. Councilmember Marziano.
Here.
Councilmember Tinsley.
Present.
Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications this evening?
No, ma'am.
Then we will move on to presentations. Will Casey Mitchell, Director of Golf, please come to the podium?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, Casey Mitchell, Director of Golf at San Hill Crane Golf Club. I come before you tonight to give you an update on the 2021 Mayor's Veterans Golf Classic. I have many people to acknowledge tonight, so please bear with me. But first, although you may be familiar with the tournament, for those in the audience and at home who are not as familiar, 2021 marked the 15th year of the Mayor's Veterans Golf Classic. This tournament is held at San Hill Crane Golf Club, and it's the largest event that we run every year. Planning and donation requests start in March, with the tournament held in early November, coinciding with Veterans Day. All of the funds raised benefit our local veterans through the VA Resource Center. And joining us tonight is Dr. Ronald Williams, Jr. He's the Chief of Staff at the VA, and he will give us a few words and explain how the funds are used. Dr. Williams?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Council. Appreciate you having us over here to speak to you today. I'm honored to join you in recognition of something that's much bigger and impactful for our veterans. Homeless and veterans are two words that should never be put alongside each other. Together with your support and the VA mission, we can change this with action. Reflecting on this past year, your donations have changed the lives and provided roofs over our veterans' heads, transporting our veterans and meals and more. And much of all these reminders and hope of our veterans and bringing them out of their darkest times. With this contribution, we will be able to continue to open many doors for our veterans, including doors that lead them to the place that they can call home. I thought that some may have lost hope in finding. To each here of you today, you are the reason why our veterans have been able to lift themselves off the ground and rediscover a second choice and chance. I hope that only as a VA leader and a veteran, that I can thank you, can't thank you enough enough in order to support the faith in helping to remove our veterans' heroes from the streets and into the life of abundant opportunities. Thank you. We can only offer and provide a brighter future for our veterans and prove unthinkable that it's not just out of their reach, but also we can build a path for them to be safe and be able to enjoy their lives. Again, thank you for playing such a vital role to change our future. And I really thank you, and it was a wonderful time to be there with some of you, and I appreciate that. And thank you for this great donation as a veteran and also being able to provide for them for their care. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
I'd like to first acknowledge all of our golf and city staff and all the volunteers who really truly made this event possible. Barb Chabray, Todd Engel, Angela and Gracie, Beth Stuglich and Louise Rivera, Esther Stepp, Dr. Wexler, Lori Lynn Pollard, Chief Appolito and Chief Basett, Teresa Blankenship, Dr. Alba, Heather and the VA volunteers, the golf management team and golf staff, Mayor Lit, Councilwoman Reed, County Commissioner Maria Moreno, our fire rescue department, and so many more. Collectively, we had more than 60 staff and volunteers come together to make this event possible. Tonight, I'd also like to recognize our sponsors, who are the foundation on which the donation was made and with whom else we would not be able to make this donation. We've asked our presenting and albatross sponsors to be here tonight for special recognition for their contributions of $5,000 and $3,000, respectively, to this cause. So I'd like to ask Council to join me at this time to recognize our sponsors and do the check presentation to the VA. If you could please join me. Sponsors, as I call your name, if you could please stay up after we give you your recognition to take a photo with Council, we would appreciate it. Representing our presenting sponsor from the Palm Beach Gardens Police and Fire Rescue Foundation, Mr. Erwin Edensen. Our albatross sponsors joining us tonight, representing the Loman Law Group, a veteran, and our city attorney, Mr. Max Loman. Representing Florida Power and Light, Mr. Donald Kuselouski. And representing TBC Corporation, Mrs. Katie Gianni. Those who could not be with us tonight, Alan Norton in blue, Wishen Jackson, JW Cheedam, and Boise Farina Matusik. You guys could stay up for just one more minute. I'd like to give special recognition to Jen Nelly and Marcy Single, who are a tremendous help with contacting local businesses. And finally, to our administrator, David Reyes, Mr. Ferris, and Mr. Stepp, and to all of you in Council. This year, we had all five of our Council members present to volunteer and/or play in the event, as well as our city manager, deputy city manager, city attorney, and many other city staff. The support behind this tournament was absolutely tremendous, and I can't thank you enough for helping us raise $72,691.11 this year. We have Dr. Williams and the VA staff. If you guys could join us for the check presentation. Yes, yes. So my next presentation has the same charitable theme. I'm here to give an annual update on an initiative that we started in February of 2019, our closest-to-the-PIN charity shootout. We ask patrons if they would donate $5 at check-in, and at the end of the month, $50 gift cards are awarded to participants in a skills competition on our Par. 3/4 hole. October through April, we also offer a summer membership to one winner, so we issue six of them a year. Each month, the funds raised are distributed to our local charities and nonprofits in $500 amounts to assist with our philanthropic work. Charities include Susan G. Komen, Hospice of Palm Beach County, Place of Hope, Christ Fellowship did a Bahamas Dorian Relief Fund, Els for Autism, Peggy Adams Animal Rescue, and Nicholas Children's Hospital, just to name a few. At its inception, February through September of 2019, we raised nearly $9,700. In fiscal year 2020, we raised over just over $12,000. Last fiscal year, we were able to raise and donate more than $35,000. Year-to-date since October, since the beginning of our fiscal year, we've raised an additional $11,000, bringing our grand total to $61,651.37 in the last three years. This is an initiative that we're very proud of and thank the community for their tremendous support for our local nonprofits. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is comments from the public for items not on the agenda, and I do not have any. So we will move on to the city manager's report, Ron. No report from Ron this evening. So we will move to the consent agenda. I am going to pull which one? Consent agenda. I will pull E, Black History Month.
I'd like to pull D, but I do not need it read.
D to 2-1-1 Awareness Week. Okay, so I am asking for a motion to pass the consent agenda minus E and D.
I'll make a motion on consent agenda minus E and D.
I'll second.
Okay. So I wanted to read proclamation. Oh, can I? All in favor of passing the consent agenda minus D and E? Aye. Any ayes? No. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to proclamation E for Black History Month. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment in 1926 of Negro History Week by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas the 2022 national theme for the observance is Black Health and Wellness and acknowledges the legacy of not only Black scholars and medical practitioners in Western medicine, but also other ways in which the Black community have contributed to health care throughout the African diaspora. And whereas the 2022 theme considers activities, rituals, and initiatives that Black communities have practiced in an effort to maintain health and well-being. And the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas the City of Palm Beach Gardens continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. And whereas the City of Palm Beach Gardens is proud to honor the history and contributions of African-Americans in our community throughout our state and nation. And now therefore, in recognition of African-Americans past and present in our community, I, Rochelle Lit, Mayor of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, do hereby proclaim February 2022 as Black History Month. I encourage all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Do we have to pass them individually, Max, or together?
Yes, ma'am, individually.
I need a motion.
Motion to... Well, Chelsea, would you like to make a motion on item D? Go ahead. It's your...
We have to...
E. We have to make a motion on E.
On D and E.
Well, she hasn't...
I don't need her. I just...
We have to do it individually, though.
All right, well, we do...
You should entertain a motion on item E and then have the vote, and then you can discuss item D.
D, that's what I thought. So I need a motion to pass item E.
I'll make the motion to accept proclamation E, Black History Month.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
So for item D, for 2-1-1 Awareness Week, I don't want to take the time to read it, but I do want to take a moment and speak on 2-1-1 and thank them for their great work with their helpline for anyone dealing with any issue, especially suicide prevention. And there's also a special area for veterans as well. The community helpline is for crisis intervention of all kinds, and the number is easy to remember, so it's 2-1-1. Please do use it, share it, and I'm so proud that we have this on our agenda today. Thank you.
Can I get a motion to pass item D on the consent agenda?
I will make a motion to pass item D on our consent agenda, please.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Got a blank there. Okay. Okay, so that's the consent agenda. Moving on, will the clerk please read ordinance one?
Ordinance one, 2022, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending the City of Palm Beach Gardens budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022, inclusive, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. Alan Owens, Finance Administrator, for the record. Ordinance one is the typical amendment that we do every year, where we carry forward our balances on open purchase orders and uncompleted CIP projects from the last year into the next year. We also adjust our beginning budgeted fund balances in line with what our ending adjusted balances were at the end of last year. We also have a couple of other requested adjustments, which we'll get into in just a couple of minutes here. As far as the carryforward of projects and purchase orders from last year, purchase orders or encumbrances totaled about $13.78 million. Balances that were unspent or unencumbered on CIP projects totaled about $19.38 million, and that's being rolled forward from last year into the current year. This slide just gives you a breakdown of some of the more significant projects that are being carried forward from last year into the current year. No big surprises here. The largest item is the top, the golf course expansion at $13.8 million. Getting into some of the requested adjustments for next year. The first one deals with Fire Station 6. Fire Station 6, which will serve the Western communities, was entertained to be financed via, to actually be constructed via financing. In our 10-year forecast, we have projected to borrow around $6 million in fiscal year '26, and the debt service on that borrowing was projected to be about $350,000 for a 20-year term. So by being able to finance it on a pay-go basis as opposed to borrowing the money, it actually, it's very beneficial to our 10-year projection. Also, by putting the money together now, if we can do this, it will help protect against further inflation as three years, four years down the road. So the proposed funding would come a little over $1 million from the Budget Stabilization Reserve, $3.7 million from the American Rescue Plan Act, and $1.2 million from fire impact fee reserves. With regards to the American Rescue Plan Act, we would be using the same provision as last year. Under the revenue loss provision, under Section 603(c)(1(c) of the Act, specifically allows infrastructure and also police, fire, and public safety expenditures to the extent of your revenue loss. If this is approved, the timeline, we would be moving forward with the design criteria development and moving into the RFP process, looking to hopefully begin construction towards the end of this year. It'd be about 12 to 18-month construction, beginning, or actually to begin around, again, December '22. Around May or June of '24 is when the anticipated completion of the building would be. As far as the location, next couple of slides. The first one just gives you an idea of focusing in on the Avenir site, where that proposed location would be on the city-owned parcel that's 15 acres. But I also think it's important to step back from a 20,000-foot view and take a look at the whole area out west. This would be a very critical station, not just for Avenir, but you can see all the other areas that are already within the corporate limits, the Bay Hill, Rustic Lakes, Ancient Tree, Osprey Isles, and Carlton Oaks. So this would be, the sooner we can get this, the better we can improve upon the service levels for the existing residents out there as well. Some of the other requested adjustments in this budget amendment, the tennis center expand, parking lot expansion are $400,000. City Hall furniture for $200,000. Generator for the new clubhouse of $190,000. City facilities drainage of about $180,000. And a screen enclosure for the Dancing Crane Restaurant. Again, since we have the money available, and we'll talk about the reserves in a little bit here. Again, if these are things that would have been in our next year FY '23 budget, so if we can accelerate these and take advantage of current prices, again, it's advantageous because of current inflationary trends to do that now. We do have one request as far as from an operational standpoint. The recreation department's currently experiencing difficulties in the hiring and retaining of part-time employees. So one of the things we would like to do is to take some of that, the pool of money that's allocated for part-time salaries, and create a total of eight new full-time positions. It would break out as far as this. The teaching assistants would be five total. Customer service specialists, there would be three. There would be one in tennis and two in the Burns Road Center, Recreation Center. So if approved, that would raise our total full-time budgeted allotment of full-time positions from 550 to 558. As I mentioned, these positions would be funded primarily with part-time funds that already exist. There would be an estimated additional cost of about $329,000 that would be funded next, the remainder of this year, out of reserves in the recreation fund, which at the end of close of last year totaled about $1.1 million. I mentioned the reserves. If these amendments are approved, the Budget Stabilization Reserve would total about $6.5 million. That's about $500,000 less than is in, was in the additional, regional adopted budget in the current year. As I mentioned, though, that would be more than offset by the savings by eliminating the having the need to borrow for the Fire Station 6. So we're still, as far as our 10-year projection, on track. Actually, it improves the situation a little bit better. As far as unassigned reserves, they remain at $26 million, which is 24% of our current year budgeted expenditures. And of course, that exceeds our policy limit, our threshold, of 17% of expenditures. And staff recommends approval of ordinance one on first reading. If you have any questions?
Could Chief Breyer address the fire station and what the situation currently is out there right now with the stations that exist in the county?
Yes, so currently, we are serving the residents out there with automatic aid, with Palm Beach County Fire Rescue 17 and West Palm Beach Fire Rescue 8. Currently, Palm Beach County Fire Rescue 17 has just one engine. Their rescue truck went away about five, six months ago. West Palm 8 is an either-or station, who, you know, gets called in quite frequently to West Palm to the city. So being out there, as soon as we can get out there, will definitely increase the level of service to those residents.
Thank you. I do not have any comment cards on this, so I'm going to close the hearing. Can I get a motion and a second to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance one, 2021, on first reading.
Second.
I'm going to bring it back for discussion. Does anyone have anything to say or questions? Marcy, you want to go?
Sure, just a couple of questions. Typically, what do we use our fire impact fee dollars for? And I feel like the ARPA dollars, this is, the fire station is a perfect thing to use for, you know, use the ARPA dollars for. But I'm just curious, as far as what do we typically use our impact fee dollars for?
It's required by law. It's set by law. They have to be used for capital improvements that are necessitated by the increase in development. So it's a perfect use.
Yeah, so I guess for the, when we get our, you know, over the next couple of years, our fire impact fee dollars with the growth in the Western areas and other areas, are we able to use those dollars for like supplying the engines and whatnot for this fire station?
When you say supplying the engines...
Or purchasing.
You have to be very careful how you, it can't be used for operating expenditures.
Nothing for operating, just for infrastructure.
Capital, yes, capital.
Just for capital improvement. Okay. And so you cannot use, you can't supplement the Budget Stabilization Fund with the fire. If we advance the dollars from that, you can't do that, right?
No, that would be nice, but we can't.
That would not be appropriate. Too bad. Just asking.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then I guess since you said, you know, due to inflation, now's the correct time to do that, to do it now, which makes sense. And we're advancing the dollars. Would this help then with, I know in our CIP plan, we have like, you know, over the next five years or so, we have like $17 million appropriated for other things like the Burns Road wreck, et cetera, and other capital improvements. Would this help by doing this now? Would this help those projects in the future?
It's not a direct correlation to those projects by doing this now.
Because they could then occur sooner?
Well, I mean, the only correlation I could see is that we're saving, we're not going to be borrowing money. So if you had to borrow money on some other project, I mean, it does give you that little additional opportunity to...
If I may add, we'll be putting together the budget, and the capital improvements will be part of that budget. And whatever impact that has, we'll be able to show in the presentation of next year's budget.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Chelsea?
So we talked about this a little bit in my agenda review, but I always like to repeat things to keep it clear for anyone who might be curious or listening. So can you talk to me a little bit about the hourly rate that we're currently paying part-timers, what we're thinking of doing, and how this will become a better incentive for folks to come and work with us in recreation?
If I may address that. That's not part of this budget amendment at all. But what we have done is addressed the part-time hourly rate that we were charging. We've done a survey across the board to see what would be appropriate. Internal, we have examined each part-time position, and we've been able to bump those salaries on an hourly rate to be a lot more competitive than we were. We're also looking at other benefits that we might be able to offer. As a result of the staffing shortages that we're experiencing in our operation, Burns Road Community Center, Recreation Center, as well as the tennis facilities, we've had to alter hours of operation because we don't have enough staff to keep them open. With the internal changes on the part-time salaries that we're doing, we're already getting hires, so it's very positive. The hourly rate increase is attracting more applicants now. And with some additional benefits that we might be able to provide, we're hoping that that will help us retain them as well. But that's all internal. It's really not part of the budget amendment. But the full, part-time to full-time... full, part-time to full-time is. And the situation with that is, we were losing some part-time instructors that were given as assistance in our Riverside program and at the desk at both Burns Road and the tennis. So we were using full-time staff to cover those operations of both tennis and Burns Road. And we need the flexibility, full-time staff, there's, there's a lot more flexibility if you have a lot of part-timers doing that. So we're, we're filling that gap. As far as the teachers at our Riverside facility and the programs there, we were losing part-time teachers to other, other private organizations doing the same type of service, but that were paying more money and making part-time. So it's, we've already examined where we're at. As soon as this is approved on second reading, we're able to move some part-timers into the full-time positions that we want and be able to attract other applicants, qualified applicants, because of the full-time position and the benefits that carries with it. So we're addressing a lot of issues regarding shortages in those part-time areas. We're not really experiencing any difficulty at this time, knock on wood, with other recruitment and retention, we're, we're about normal with that. So we don't have any problems with applicants from the other area, it's just mainly that part-time that's, that's keeping us from, keeping our facilities open.
That was a wonderful explanation, thank you. That will probably end my questions. I just want to say thank you so much for setting us up so we don't have future debt service, for looking ahead and planning ahead for inflation as well, and the fact that we have, you know, a self-funding recreation department and so much more is, is something to be proud of in our budget again, so thank you.
Carl?
Well, you know, when that budget word comes out, all of our ears pop up for a while. We always have a lot of questions. To me, this, this is just another step in stabilizing the city, you know, with our extra part-time, what we're going to do at the fire station, there's really not a lot to say about it. I'm going to support it. Because of the city staff, you guys do such, everybody's so ingrained, it just shows the community how stable this Palm Beach Gardens really is, you know? And we're ingrained in these numbers all year round, so there's nothing surprising here. We knew the golf course was going to cost as much as it does, that'll be a great asset to this, to the city. And as usual, you do a great presentation on it, simplifies it for us people that don't get into the numbers like you do. So I think it's awesome, and I'm going to support it. Thanks.
Mark?
Yeah, so I think I remember, going to staffing for a moment, you know, like everybody's having issues with staff, and as, as am I personally with our office, and competition is pretty strong for, for quality employees, and we've always prided ourselves in having quality employees in the city. Going back, I think before the 2008 bubble, I think we had like 575 employees, is that? That number seems to stick.
Yeah.
And then coming out of.
It was well over 500, we went down.
We went down significantly, so.
Significantly, yes.
And here we are, what, what year are we, 2022? So 14 years later, and we're still not at the staffing levels that we were at back in 08 with a smaller population. So I don't think adding eight full-time staff members at a competitive rate is really anything that anybody should be concerned about. And if anything, staffing our facilities to the maximum to make sure we generate the proper revenues, providing the services to the residents so they can play tennis on a Sunday afternoon, or go to Burns Road Rec Center later in the afternoon is, is a good thing. So I, I understand the, the challenges of, of finding quality people, so I think this is a good move to make sure our city is, is staffed properly and it's not overstaffed based on history. And just a quick comment regarding the budget stabilization fund, we're basically taking 2.1 to $5 million from the budget stabilization fund to fund these projects, to accelerate them. And you said it's about a half a million dollars, that'll put us, but a half a million dollars less than what was initially projected.
Than what was in the budget that was adopted, that's correct.
And, but even though, even though we're taking out 2.1, so.
Right, but we're saving almost 2 million in the 10-year forecast by, by not borrowing.
Right, no, so it's, it's a smart move.
And also saving, I don't know the total, but the additional projects, the 400,000 for the tennis parking, those others, about a million, so they would have been in the '23 budget that we'll be working on.
So we're taking them out of a future capital improvement.
So it's like paying it now instead of paying it later at a higher rate.
Right, so we can take them out of that list of capital improvement projects and move some up next year. And yet we still have 6.5 million in our budgets here.
And actually, yeah, we're at 6.5, and again, because of no debt service, we're better off and.
Right, no, I, I agree. I, I just wanted to clarify, so thank you. Smart budgeting, again, perfect.
Mark brought up an, an interesting point about the staffing levels 14 years ago and where we are today. Since the last census, in the last 10 years, the city's grown 22%. And we're the second fastest growing city in the county, so adding the staff will set us in, in good stead going forward for that as well.
Remember, the functions are being performed, or they should be if we had the, the part-time position, but just to be able to attract and retain positions, this is a necessary move, we think.
Okay. The, the funding for those positions is coming out of the recreation fund reserves too, so that's.
Correct, the entire funding is coming out of recreation, the part-time salaries that are available, and then the additional 329,000 out of the recreation fund reserves.
And real quick, we're anticipating that funding these positions going forward will come from added usage of facilities.
That, that is the hope, is we can migrate towards the pre-pandemic, you know, levels of service, yes.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, all right. Then hearing that, I will call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Will the clerk please read the title for ordinance two 2022?
Ordinance two, 2022, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a text amendment to the city's comprehensive land use plan to add a new property rights element and text amendments to the future land use element, transportation element, infrastructure element, conservation element, and capital improvements element to remove the urban growth boundary, including an amendment to the future land use map to remove the urban growth boundary, providing for transmission to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO, and other reviewing agencies, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes. Note to the public, there is a sign-in sheet at the front table for anyone wanting additional information from the Department of Economic Opportunity.
Thank you. Going to open the hearing. Will Don Sonnenborn please, oh, it's going to be Martin Fitz, not Don. Okay, Mr. Fitz.
I, I've changed just a little bit. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. For the record, my name is Martin Fitz, not Don Sonnenborn. I do have a brief presentation for you. And please excuse me, the, the weather this weekend did a number on my voice, so I do apologize in advance.
Thank you, everybody.
Yes, before you this evening is a comprehensive plan text amendment to, it is an amendment in two parts. The first is to add a property rights element in response to recent legislation, and the other is to make some text amendments and a map amendment in order to remove the urban growth boundary from the comprehensive plan. First, we'll deal with the property rights element. This past summer, the legislation, legislature adopted House Bill 59, which requires local governments to add a property rights element into the comprehensive plan, which basically enshrines the certain property rights, property rights within the comprehensive plan to recognize a property owner's rights to possess and control their property, to dispose of their property, to maintain it, to exclude others, all the sorts of things that are already contained within different parts of the, of the different statutes within, in the different state statutes, and also our code. And also to allow for different property owners, or for property owners to have a say in what happens on their property, in public hearings, and what's happening with their property. These things are already included within our code as well. I want to, I'll make a note that, that this is being included within the comprehensive plan only to be consistent with this, with the legislation. All, this does not add anything new to either our code or to the state statutes. Next is the urban growth boundary. The urban growth boundary is intended to direct growth within the city to areas where urban services can be efficiently and effectively provided so that the, that, excuse me. So that we can, so that the city doesn't promote urban sprawl. The urban growth boundary has been a part of the comprehensive plan for, for many years. However, due to recent annexations that have occurred in the western part of the city, different development that has been approved in the county, the, this, the development that has occurred in the area is no longer consistent with the existing urban growth boundary. Recent exit, and I'll go over these within the, the next couple of slides. I will note that the removal of the urban growth boundary will grant no additional benefits to any of the properties within the city, within the city's boundaries. This is the current future land use map. You'll notice that the urban growth boundary is the, the heavy dark line, dark dashed line. You know, it's in two parts, the easternmost is at the eastern side of the Loxahatchee Slough, also on the, the western edge of PGA National and, and Mirasol. And we also have a portion that's around Avenir and Ancient Tree on the west. We're proposing to simply remove that. As I mentioned, our annexation over the past few years, we've annexed, in 2016, we annexed the portion, or the parcel of land that is now Ancient Tree. In 2016, at that time, we amended the urban growth boundary to include this area, and as part of that development order, we required the provision of central water and sewer. In 2017, we annexed Carlton Oaks and Osprey Isles. This, these two communities were already completely developed, and, and as part of those developments, they already had water and sewer provided from West Palm Beach. In 2018, we annexed Bay Hill Estates. This community already had water provided from the Palm Beach County Utility Services. Now, I mentioned that none of the, no parcels within the city will gain any benefits by removing the urban growth boundary. There are three parcels, or groups of parcels that are within the city that are within, that are currently outside of the urban growth boundary that can be developed. These parcels are shown here. All three of these currently have, have developments that are, were, I'm sorry. They have plans that were approved through the county that they can build today without anything from the city if they wanted to, whether the urban growth boundary was removed or not. So they, they would not receive any additional benefit from removing the urban growth boundary. On the north side, we have the, the North Lake CLF that has approval for medical or dental, and they require the, the central water and sewer. On the south side, we had the, approved in 2008, directly south of that, the WW9 property has almost 85,000 square feet of office, specifically requiring central sewer. Directly to the west of that, we have the North Lake 20, approved in 2010, 37,000 square feet. This particular property has numerous traffic conditions that were required for that one, including conditions that were included as part of the State Road 7 project. In addition to these projects within the city, this county has also approved projects in the area that required additional infrastructure that are consistent with the urban character that is inconsistent with urban growth boundary. Directly south of Avenir, we have the Coconut Palm Plaza on the east side of Coconut Boulevard, which was just recently approved in the county about two months ago, which approved 49,000 square feet and a 16-pump fuel center, fuel station. And immediately to the west is the Shops at Indian Trail, which approved 106,000 square feet and another 16-pump fuel station. Although, to the far west, we have Pierce Hammack Elementary School, and then to the east of that is currently a charter school, which is under review for up to 1,500 middle and high school students. All of these will require central water and sewer. I will note, will note that there is a central sewer line around the Shops at Indian Trail currently in place. This petition has been noticed in the ad, and, and I park notice has been sent out. Currently, we have not received any comments to date. This did go to the Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board, where it was recommended approval unanimously in January. Staff does recommend approval as presented on first reading, and staff is available if you have any questions.
I do not have any comment cards on this, so I will close the hearing. I need a motion and a second to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance two 2022, first reading.
I'll second.
Marcy seconds. Okay, now I'm going to bring it back for discussion. Carl, do you have any questions on this one?
I think I'm going to listen a little bit more as we go forward. I mean, it looks like it's just growth and what we're going to do, you know, moving forward, but I don't have really any questions on this at all, so I'm just going to listen a little bit and maybe chime back in, but right now, I'm good to go with it. So thanks, Martin.
Yeah, I don't quite understand all this. I, I trust the staff on all of it, I just wanted to hear if anyone had any other comments.
So this is just a, because of House Bill 59 regarding growth management from the state, we have to do this, or it's part of what we're doing, so it's considered housekeeping, and anything extra was a wonderful explanation, and it got me some deeper understanding of, of what's going on out west, so I appreciate that. But there are no new rights, there are no, no changes, and we are mandated to do this. So aside from thanking you for the very good presentation, I have no questions.
So I agree with you 100%. The urban service boundary, or the urban growth boundary in this case, were set forth for several reasons, and one was to discourage urban sprawl, and also to preserve or, or to, to reduce the public costs of providing utilities such as water and sewer, which in these areas, they already are there. And so, in my opinion, municipalities are the urban core of the counties in which they sit. So I feel that an urban service boundary in our case is really a moot point, because I, I feel that this is absolutely what we should be doing. It's made for counties, not municipalities, in my opinion. So I agree 100% and definitely support it. The only other thing an urban service boundary is for is, is to preserve green space, and our code allows for that now. So we're very clear about that as far as saving our preservation, conservation, and in fact, in the western communities, we saved 50-plus percent for Avenir when that was going forward, and I know our staff and our council is 100% supportive of that going forward also. So I'm definitely in support of it, and I think it was a smart move. Thank you.
Does this set us up for future annexation? Does it come into this at all, really, no? No?
This action has no consideration related to future annexations, this is really just housekeeping in order to ensure that the character of the existing development is consistent with our comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Marcy mentioned about the, the green space out there. Also, as part of this, it doesn't touch any of the overlays, so all of the overlays that we have that, that are occurring in this growth boundary that we're getting rid of will stay as is, PGA Boulevard and wherever else, right?
Yes, no ma'am, there's no overlays that are impacted by this change in the comprehensive plan. They're all maintained.
All right. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Martin. Thank you, Martin. Manuka honey is what you need. Manuka honey is the best for that. We are at Ordinance Number 3, 2022. Will the clerk please read the title?
Ordinance 3, 2022. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopted in accordance with Section 186.1995 Florida statutes, calling for a referendum to be held on August 23, 2022, proposing to the electorate of the city that the city council be authorized to grant property tax exemption to certain qualified businesses pursuant to Section 3, Article 7 of the state constitution, providing for submission of the proposed ballot question to the electors of the city, setting forth the form of the question to be voted upon at such election, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for the purposes.
I'm going to open the hearing, and for staff presentation, I'll call on City Attorney Max Lowman.
Yeah, I went over this with all of you during your agenda reviews, but for the public, basically what this is, is pursuant to Chapter 169 of the Florida statutes, it allows the city council, if authorized by the electorate through a referendum, to abate property taxes under certain circumstances for new capital investment of a corporation satisfying certain qualifications in certain industries moves to the city, or if one that is existing in the city were to expand, then it affords the council the opportunity to abate the taxes to encourage economic development. The City of Palm Beach Gardens has always been on the forefront of trying to encourage responsible economic development and growth and attract good businesses to the city, those that not only provide a good tax base through their property taxes, but also through long-term development and investment in the city. Carrier Corporation is a good example of that. They made a multi-multi-million dollar investment in the city out there, Donald Ross Road and I-95. In the last 10 years, we've had, that we have had this program, they are the only entity that the staff has brought forward and recommended to the city to do tax abatement. And all this does is direct the staff to put this on the, to contract with the supervisor elections and put this on the referendum for the August election, so that the electorate has an opportunity to vote again. And again, this is, all of our voters, we have to, we need a majority of our voters in the city to vote for this, so that it would just put this tool, well, keep this tool in your toolbox. We have many economic development tools that you, as a council, have been privy to over your tenure on the council, and this is just one of the many tools that we have. And so, we encourage your support and approval of this ordinance, so we can put it before the public for a vote.
During my agenda review, I asked, what would a qualifying business be, and are economic development policies and the state constitution enumerate what they are? So, that's correct.
Well, we have seven different industries. There's biotech industries. We have it defined in our code, certain industries that, they're targeted industries that are targeted by the state, and then we have some that we've added to that target in the, in our code. And again, they really surround bioscience, technology, things like that. Like I said, Carrier Corporation was a perfect example of that because of their, their, yeah, the engineering programs, aeronautical engineering, and they were environmentally sensitive, air conditioning and all the stuff that Carrier does with their interior environment management. They fell right in line with that. And that's, you know, and that's what we're trying to attract with it.
So, we are voting to put this on the ballot, and there will be an education program for the electorate before they have to vote.
The city will undertake an education, an information program, just like we did with the charter and some other things, to inform the voters of what they would be considering.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
It'll be on the August ballot.
Yes, on the August ballot.
And that will be the only question on the ballot to the residents of the city, specific for the city.
Correct.
Okay. In that case, I'm gonna close the hearing. Can I get a motion and a second to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve Ordinance 3, 2022, on first reading.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Will the clerk please read the title for Ordinance 4, 2022?
Ordinance 4, 2022. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 78 Land Development Regulations at Section 78-187 Special Events to Add Emergency Medical Testing and/or Vaccination Site, Drive-Thru, or Walk-Up as an approved special event type, and to increase the length of time permitted for the sale of pumpkins and Christmas trees, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 78 Land Development shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes. Mayor, I had Max Lowman on your reference sheet. It's actually planning and zoning.
Okay, in that case, will Mr. Fitz please perche potem again?
Hello, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Once again, for the record, Martin Fitz. Very quickly, this is just a very quick amendment to the LDRs to add an emergency medical testing and/or vaccination site, drive-through, or walk-up as a type of special event to our code, to the special event section of the code. In order, it's basically to allow for, currently for the COVID testing sites, we've had a lot of people that have been coming forward wanting to do COVID testing, and our code doesn't really allow for us to be able to do them for a long period of time. Right now, all we can do is do them for seven days, and because of the unique nature of the COVID testing sites, it really, seven days doesn't give them, give us enough time to really set up and really go through and do the in-depth analysis to make sure that it's being done efficiently, effectively, safely, and set up and take down, and seven days isn't long enough. So, we wanted to be able to do it for 30 days initially, and then also allow for a one-time extension of 45 days, so that we can have an effective period of doing that. So, we're requesting to put it into the code for a special event of 30 days, just to, and we set it as an emergency medical event, because we don't know what is going to be happening in the future. And with the, and while we're opening it up, we, because of our recent experience, we, with the pumpkin and Christmas tree sales, we also know that we need a little bit more time with those as well. So, we expanded those, we want to expand those to 45 days, just to give more time for the logistics of setting those up and taking those down as well. So, we are bringing those, this to first reading tonight. We'll go to the Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board next week, and then we will bring their recommendation to council next month for second reading. And I would like to take a moment to, if I could, to recognize Bahara Wolves, sorry, and Reva Pierce. They handle all of the special events. They do an excellent job, and we have quite, we have so many of them, it's just, and they do an excellent job running through all of those, so, and they have been doing all of these as well, so I just wanted to recognize those. Staff is available if you have any questions about, for the special events.
Anybody have a question for Martin? Chelsea, you've got one?
Just thank you. Let's get things a little more safe for things like this as well, for our residents. Thanks.
The only question I had at agenda review was, this goes for county property within the city as well. They still need the permit.
Yes.
I have a question.
That's correct. We have police powers over all the properties located in our city, and that's actually, as you may recall, one of the impetus for doing this, is because we had such a snafu out there at the, at the library when they just willy-nilly set up that COVID, COVID testing site, and there was no maintenance traffic. It caused a lot of problems for our police and fire, and so that's one of the reasons we want to do this, so we can have control over it.
Max.
We had eventually got as much control over it as we possibly could. This will give us an opportunity to meet and coordinate with whichever county or private agency that wishes to do it on whatever property there. Some are private property, some may be public property, but it gives us a chance to get it right before we start, instead of having to go back and try to correct everything.
Max, tell us how you really feel.
I think everybody knows how I feel about most of the things that Palm Beach County does, because...
I'm just kidding. But I do want to thank, take the time to thank staff and our city manager, because I know I had several calls the minute that, that line started, and I think over the weekend, I sent you a text message, and I tell you what, in 24 hours, there was a nice change, and I had so many people thanking us, because they knew that we were able to make what was a horrible traffic situation that much better, especially for the residents that couldn't get into their own communities. So, thank you. Thank you.
I'll give credit where credit was due. That was for this man right here, and his traffic unit was just totally amazing, Assistant Chief, good job.
Appreciate that very much.
And the traffic unit took this thing on like, like it was, you know, something, they were just amazing. And the coordination with the county, we made it work.
Thank you.
Mark, you had a question?
Well, I did, and I brought it up in the agenda review. You know, we have a 30-day approval with a one-time 45-day extension, but you know, we saw and we're still seeing, hopefully won't see much longer, the length of this current pandemic and how many times this may have had to extend. So, my question to staff yesterday was, you know, if we need more than 75 days, if there's an ongoing pandemic issue going on, the process to re-up for another 30 days would not require a complete breakdown of the facilities, and then a re-application, and then a restart-up, I suppose, of operations, because we wouldn't want to have to have done that, you know, in mid-November, when you think, or in December, everything's clearing up, let's take it all down, and then a week later, go, oh crap, we got to put it all back up again, so...
Hey, language.
That's what happened, that's what happened in New York. That is what happened in New York.
Right, so, so there is a process to allow the facilities to remain within, after 75 days with just a simple reapplication, correct?
I'd like to address, yes, there is, and the way that we cooperate with these other government agencies and private, if we have a special events permit that's working and goes past beyond the extension, all they have to do is call up and say, can we continue use this application we have for another application, and it's done. So, we get it, we understand. We're not much of a bureaucratic thing like other government agencies may be, but...
I know, and I'm not...
It'll be automatic unless there's an adjustment that we say, well, yeah, but you need to do this, that, and the other, just to make things better, we would certainly do that, but we would continue it, new special events based upon the old application.
Good. And then, of course, I don't know if this allows the city to be a little bit more flexible, because I could say something, really watch my language here, because this was a real cluster in terms of how long we've had a pandemic and how limited resources we've had in setting up more than just limited space for testing and treatment options. You would think after two years, there would be more planning available and more spaces available. So, in having this ordinance in place, would it allow more opportunities for private entities or public entities to open up in various places in the city to provide better services to our residents?
The answer is yes.
Thank you.
Carl, any questions?
I just want to say a couple things. We spoke a lot on this, because you know why, this little thing's important, because it's common sense. So, you know, we don't want our citizens to be collateral damage from what somebody else tries to do, for example, the county setting up that testing website. So, I mean, it's kind of a no-brainer, so thanks for doing it, but my one question, does it become in effect immediately after second reading, second reading and approval? Next day? Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, then I will close the hearing. Can I get a motion and a second to approve?
Do we already do that?
I'll make a motion to approve. I will second.
Bring it back for discussion. Any further discussion? That was questions, actually, Marcy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Okay, so, where are we on the agenda? All right, we have no resolutions. Items for council action discussion and items of interest. Chelsea?
I just want to share a couple of things that are happening at the TPA. The Safe Street Summit is happening February 17th and 18th. 17th is pre-conference mobile workshop. Unfortunately, I cannot attend, because we have our TPA board meeting at the same time, so the TPA has offered that if any council members would like to go, it would be covered. It's pretty cool. You get to go around Miami and see what their transit looks like, so if you guys have a few hours you could take to do that. The 18th is the conference. I encourage you to come and take the Bright Line with me to go down to the conference. It's going to be excellent. Been a few times and gotten to watch our city win some awards there as well, so it's a really wonderful conference and very impactful. Also, there's an infrastructure law overview regarding the bipartisan infrastructure law and its impact on our local transportation projects. It's going to be presented by Holland and Knight on March 1st from 2:00 to 3:00. It is virtual, and you can also find that on the TPA website. And then, lastly, I was invited to a call from one of our residents who was kind enough to inform me about a presentation by FDOT about the State Road 7 Beeline Highway update. Right, just so everyone knows, right now, the project is about 90% complete. It will be finishing final design spring of 2022. Letting, which is receiving bids for construction contracts, will be happening after that, and then they're expecting construction to be complete the summer of 2025. Lot of questions about this project, so I'm hopeful that FDOT will reach out and provide further understanding, because it's been about almost 10 years since it got started, so people who didn't know about it before are now curious. So, hopefully, we'll get some communication, but anyone who is curious, I recommend they go onto the FDOT website, or just Google State Road 7 Beeline, and all of the information is there for them to learn about it.
Thank you, Chelsea. So, I just have a couple of quick things to forget. Monday, February 14th is Valentine's Day. Make a reservation at one of our phenomenal Palm Beach Gardens restaurants and sit outside in our expanded outside dining areas and enjoy dinner. On the 19th and 20th, we have Artigra in District Park, so we're all excited about that. And on the 24th, the Honda starts, so we will be moving into Honda Weekend, and we're looking forward to seeing everybody out there. So, with that, anybody else?
It's gonna be a busy month.
Busy month.
I do have one comment. I know that in December, I brought up redistricting, and I don't know if you guys have had any thoughts about it. I mean, I just wanted to bring it up again, because I know that we've been very busy, and there's other bills that are very important, but it looked like we have several neighborhoods, our neighborhoods, that have Senator Powell and Senator Harrell as a representative, and I don't, I just wanted to bring it up in case that's something that's important to you guys, and we should make note of, or let our neighborhoods know, or any of that. I know it's not approved yet, but...
At this point, nothing's final, and they keep telling us that anything could change at any time, so it's most likely that we're going to end up with two representatives and two senators in the city, but exactly where and what, they're not sure yet, so I don't think there's much that we can do at this point.
I don't know if they'll listen to us if they say, if we say anything or not, but just want to make it very clear, very aware.
Yeah, so, it's distressing.
Yes. Okay.
I don't know, I don't know if it's good or bad that we have more than one...
I don't know either, I just want to make sure that everyone knows.
It could be good for the city to have more people advocating on our behalf if we need appropriations or help from a city perspective.
Yep.
If they, what? If you can get them to advocate, well, Senator Powell, yeah. So, but as far as confusion on when you go to the polls, and where you go, and who you're going to vote for, the city's going to have four different people now instead of just two, so confusing. All right, thanks, Marcy. With that, I will adjourn.